All right, if everybody could please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. All right, again, just another friendly reminder that we are required to wear masks if we wish to proceed. All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for attending. Let the record show that all board members are in attendance, with the exception of Mr. McGinnis, who I believe will be arriving shortly. And before we begin, I just want to take a moment and thank the entire West Islip community for the outpouring of love and support and generosity that you have shown my family this past week. I really have left myself, my family, utterly speechless, and we are eternally grateful for everyone that has reached out and cast your my followers. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I greatly thank you all. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak on an agenda item. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the September 21st, 2021 planning session? But just understand that there was a correction that was identified by the Education Committee, and the correction has been corrected. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so this is National School Board recognition. So Ms. Burns, and then I'll be going.
Good evening. Each year in our borough, school districts throughout New York State take the opportunity to recognize its board members for their commitment to the school district's children. Board members volunteer, and at no time has their devotion and dedication been more apparent. Our elected board members play a crucial role in our community, and their service affects the present and the future lives of our children and the school district. Although they deserve our appreciation every day of the year, we will take the opportunity this evening to ensure they receive the thanks they deserve for what they can sometimes seem like a thankless love. It takes strong schools to build a strong community, and I see firsthand the countless hours that Mr. Tussi, Mr. Antonello, Mrs. Brown, Mr. Compatello, Mrs. LaRosa, Mr. McGinnis, and Mr. McCann dedicate to ensuring that our schools meet the needs of all of our children in this ever-changing world. Therefore, on behalf of the West Islip Union Free School District and our entire West Islip community, I present this certificate of recognition to Board President Anthony Tussi and Vice President Rich Antonello.
Okay, once again, please, I'd like to remind everyone that we do need to be wearing masks. If we are not, we're going to take a five-minute recess and give everyone the opportunity to mask up. Thank you. Personnel, Mr. Taylor?
We have a motion for the approval of the personnel agenda as listed in your backup with the exception of Veronica Ferrante, who has withdrawn her interest in part-time duties.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. That's it? All right, fantastic. All right, curriculum update, Ms. Morrison?
Good evening. I'd just like to take this opportunity to report out that the district is moving along well in all areas of curriculum and instruction. Right now, we are planning for a very fruitful superintendent's conference day coming up on November 2nd. We're going to have a wide variety of topics for our teachers, and what's really great is our administrators and teaching staff are the ones that are facilitating most of our workshops. Our staff will be trained in data literacy, using phenomena and wonder to inquire in the areas of STEM, NarCam, and vape awareness training, the power of optimism, keys to beginning reading, and current trends impacting school-aged children are just some of the topics that we are going to be covering. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morrison. On to our board committees. So start with the Education Committee and Ms. Antonello. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Good evening, everybody. The Education Committee met on October 5th in Beach Street Library. In attendance were committee members, Ms. Brown, Mrs. LaRosa, and myself. Other board members present included Mr. Tussi, Mr. McCann, Mr. Compatello, Mr. McGinnis. Administrators present included Superintendent Burns, Assistant Superintendent Morrison, and Assistant Superintendent Palladie. The first topic discussed was DEI. The district's policies are in good shape when it comes to diversity and inclusion. It was emphasized that the district has never taught critical race theory and never will. The second topic was... The second topic was an update on curriculum and instructional goals for the next full year. The district is already looking ahead to 2021, 2022. The third topic discussed was pre-K enrollment. The board has decided to maintain the program as it is, allowing its sections open to enrollment. The fourth topic discussed was oral language update concerning ASL and Mandarin Chinese. The board discussed the possibility of phasing out ASL and making it elective, or making Mandarin an elective. No final decision was taken. The fifth topic discussed was the Panorama SEL survey. The district is sensitive to the social and emotional needs of the kids, and the survey will highlight areas of concern that need to be addressed. They'll be administered in the first week of November. Lastly, the board has provided a draft copy of the K-12 school counseling plan for the 2021, 2022 school year. The meeting ended at 7:30.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonello. On to the Finance Committee, we have Mrs. LaRosa.
Okay, thank you very much. The Finance Committee met on October 5th. Committee members present were myself, Mr. McGinnis, Mr. McCann. Board members present, Mr. Antonello, Ms. Brown, Mr. Compatello, Mr. Tussi. And the administrators present were Ms. Burns, Ms. Palladi, Ms. Morrison. Purpose of the meeting was to review the warrants for the month and discuss pertinent fiscal matters. The meeting was called to order at 7:37 PM. We discussed the treasurer's reports. They were presented and accepted by this committee. The financial statements for June, July, and August were presented and accepted by this committee. We discussed the Internal Claims Auto Report for September, which was also presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll certificates were looked at, 9321, 916, 917, 101, presented and accepted by the committee. Review of warrants, which were also accepted by the Finance Committee. And we reviewed the board agenda, approval of budget transfers, and approval of surplus, which we will hear tonight during Ms. Palladi's report to the board, along with some construction cooperation, contract change orders, and approval of contracts. Discussion items were in the audit committee meeting with R.S. Abrams. That will be on Tuesday, October 19th. The purpose of this meeting will be to discuss the year-end audit results for the 2021 school year. And finally, Ms. Palladi reviewed our 2021 fund balance allocation, which committee were pretty extensive due to our challenging year with COVID and which really created some different fiscal matters with our budget from last year to this year. And she explained why that was and how it would impact the school district. So that will, of course, come up for discussion as we move into budget season. The meeting was adjourned at eight thirty. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mrs. LaRosa. Building and Grounds Committee, we have Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everyone. The Building and Grounds Committee also met on Tuesday, October 5th. Committee members in attendance were Mr. Compatello, Mr. Tussi, and myself. Board of Ed members in attendance were Mrs. LaRosa, Mrs. Brown, Mr. McGinnis, and Mr. Antonello. Administrators present were Mrs. Burns, Mr. Bossi, Mrs. Palladi, Mrs. Morrison, and Mr. Taylor. Couple of items on the agenda was the bond and capital projects update. So we've still got bond work going on through this year and our capital projects that were approved on last year's budget. We've got generator and backup generators going in in Manituck. It's a little delayed because of COVID. We've got a generator for B Street, again, pushed back to the summer because of COVID. We will be installing a new campus fence around the library fields, around Paul J. Blue, around the transportation group. So you see that white picket fence that's kind of falling apart. That'll be replaced as part of the capital project that we approved. We're installing a new service line in the cafeteria in the high school for new coming up in November. All of those projects will be scheduled around, so they don't interfere with any schoolwork that's being done. We're doing a fitness center renovation. We're looking for the April break to do the fitness center renovation. So again, we're not interfering with any projects that are going on. We've got our solar project. So as we mentioned several times here, we've gotten a solar project underway where the entire district will be fitted with solar panels. It will save us a tremendous amount of money in energy costs. It'll be cash positive for us, day one. We've secured funding through a loan, a low-interest loan, but the overall result will be cash positive. So that project will be... The solar panels are ready to go. All the principals are meeting again, so that it can be implemented without any disruption in the school community. The last item that we discussed was the Missera community update. So hopefully, everyone's received a postcard. They all went out to every household in West Islip to give you a chance to register for our Missera community advisory committee. So that deadline to have those in is tomorrow, Friday. So if you haven't got that in, please go and call the district website and put your name down. We will then select the committee and start the process of discussing options for the Missera property and hope to have robust conversations and get a project that everyone can agree upon and be beneficial for the community, the children, and the town for years to come. Committee, meeting is over at 8:15, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCann. And before we move on to the Special Education Committee, please, again, I need to remind everyone of the need to wear masks as we must follow all guidelines. So please, those of us that are sitting directly in front of us and some towards the background, kindly ask you to put your masks on and greatly appreciate your cooperation. Thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Brown, the Special Education Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Tussi. Good evening. On October 6th, the Special Education Committee met at the district's office at 8:30 AM. In attendance were myself, Ron McGinnis, board member, Jean Dowling, Director of Special Education, Dale Doherty, Assistant Director of Special Education, Dawn Morrison, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. We reviewed new entrants into the special education program. The meeting ended at 8:45 AM. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Brown. On to the Safety Committee, Mr. Antonello.
Thank you. Good evening. The Safety Committee met on September 21st at 18:30 hours. Members present, Ms. Brown, Mrs. Morrison, Palladi, Dr. Bridgen, John McLevy, and myself. Agenda items discussed: vape training for staff and students. Vaping has become a major league problem in high schools. Hurricane training for staff and school safety officers. I hope to shoot to stick and follow that too. I do, however. Emergency response protocols we discussed for building emergency response plans, evacuation plans in drills, and door access. Technology cameras. Additional cameras need to be installed behind the stands in the high school field and all J. Blue teachers' parking lots. And the SAPD did its press assessment report. They said everything looks good. Just make sure you have none of the door chocks. They're a safe area with the means of safety or convenience. And we secured 19 points.
Thank you, Mr. Compatello. And our last committee update is the Health and Wellness Committee. That we have Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Health and Wellness Committee met virtual, all of these have been virtual, on Monday, September 20th at 10 AM. Members present were Mr. Brand, Mrs. Pratt, Mrs. Canestra, Mrs. Carrigan, Mrs. Melody, Mrs. Summers, Mrs. Marshall, myself, Mrs. Diaz, Mrs. Steinwise, Mrs. Heinch, Mrs. Byerlin, Mrs. Russo, Mrs. Alefante, Mr. Rubano, Mrs. Isolato, and Mrs. Curly. We discussed, we welcomed all the newcomers as it was our first meeting of the year. We reviewed past initiatives that the Health and Wellness Committee has done. Mindfulness, Breast Cancer Awareness Day, Don't Text and Drive, Social Host Awareness, West Island Magnets, and a host of other issues and events that we sponsored last year. Obviously, last year with the COVID, we were limited to the amount of events that we could do. But we are excited this year that the Color Run is back in person, Sunday, October 17th. Last year, we had a virtual Color Run, and we thank everyone who participated and put that together. This year, we are back. It'll be about a little less than a mile run around the high school. If you haven't done it, it's a great event to bring your kids to and yourselves. You get doused in all different dyes and colors. So bring extra set of clothing or sheets for the back of your car as you drive your kids home, because they'll be covered in all different dyes. Kids love it. It's a great way to promote health and wellness around. We've got t-shirts available for the first, I believe it's the first 150 registrants. You can register at MySchoolBucks. You can also register to volunteer. So if your kids need community service, they can go to that site and also register for community service. Just a great day all around, and we look forward to seeing everyone. And we'd like to thank the t-shirt sponsors, which are a lot of our local businesses, that sponsor the t-shirts and provide this to be a great fundraiser for the group. The last item that we talked about is that we will be also providing and sponsoring the Breast Cancer Awareness Day fundraiser on October 22nd. We provide pens to the participants, and all the proceeds will be donated to the West Islip Breast Cancer Coalition. The next meeting is Tuesday, October 12th at 9:30, and it's a virtual meeting. And we hope to see everyone there. Thanks for all that the Health and Wellness does for the children of the community.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. To Financial Matters and Business Items, with Mrs. Palladi.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The treasurer's report for the month of August had a beginning balance of $48,511,679.84 and an ending balance of $45,78,381.73. May I have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4086 through 4097 in the general fund and 4089 through 4091 in the capital fund?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2021-22 contracts as listed on the agenda?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of surplus music equipment and books from West Islip High School, Manituck, Oklinock, and Paul J. Blue Elementary Schools?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution related to the financing of our energy performance contract with Norisco with Bank of America Public Capital Corp.?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the change order related to a Ventura construction corp for a credit amount in the amount of $3,765.86 related to work done at the West Islip High School?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Palladi. Can I have an approval for the 2021-2022 building emergency response plans? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of the White Amendment of Agreement Regarding Pre-K? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of Teamsters 237 Clarifile Memorandum of Agreement Regarding Title Change? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have approval of the stipulation settlement and release regarding student aid? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our superintendents report. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. So based on feedback at the Education Committee meeting on Tuesday night, the board's goals and objectives for 2021, 2022 have been updated. May I have a motion to approve the goals and objectives as presented?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The school year is in full swing. Our students are attending school full-time, every day, and appear to be enjoying it. Our athletic fields are busy well into the evening. Clubs and activities have begun to meet, and the first drama productions of the year commenced this week with the high school senior play. As I sat in my office last night, I could hear one of our Beach Street bands practicing jingle bells assure a sign that our winter concert season will be upon us before we know it. I think I could see Mr. Alwight just smiling behind that mask. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the annual pool conference for New York State Superintendents. I was able to interact with colleagues throughout the state as well as officials from the State Education Department. Among the many concerns that were raised are issues that we're seeing right here in West Islip, including substitute teacher shortages and other positions as well, challenges in supporting students' mental wellness, and misunderstandings related to the DEI initiative. The state reminded everyone in attendance that its framework is a recommendation, a recommendation, to ensure that all districts create student-centered learning environments that educate all students and provide the appropriate supports and services that result in positive outcomes for all students. That has always been the mission of our district, and we will stay the course. Within the week, you will receive notification of New York State's Digital Equity Survey, which will hopefully be completed by all families in the district. The purpose of this survey is to understand the level of each student's access to the internet and technology devices outside of the school environment, in effect, that means at home. The survey is brief, and the results will inform funding that the district receives to make sure that all of our students have the equipment and the internet access they need to be successful students. And then, as Mr. McCann mentioned earlier, the Color Run will take place on Sunday, October 17th. Homecoming will be held the following week on Saturday, October 23rd. The parade will step on from 1:15 and move from Westbrook to the high school, as has been in past years. Unfortunately, not last year, but we're back. And the game against Philcourt will start at 2 o'clock, so we hope to see you there. Thank you, Mr. Tussi.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Burns.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene in the public comment, and although the state board does not require us to hold public comment session, we've chosen to do so because we believe it's crucial for us to hear from our community members about the concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously. We want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at future meetings or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. We also want to point out that under the state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel questions very seriously. On these matters, we ask that you go through the appropriate administrative channels. We also recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for each other. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any diversion of views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting until once quarter hundred restored. Thank you. And on that note, I would like to welcome Mrs. Curly.
Good evening. As I'm sure you're aware, the National School Board Association sent a letter to Mr. Biden asking for federal assistance to stop threats and acts of violence against schoolchildren, public school board members, and other public school district officials and educators. You guys read that letter, right? I have a copy of it if you know. You read it? Okay, good. So it basically suggests that parents who speak out on board meetings and challenge school policies should be considered domestic terrorists, and that the NSBA is looking for assistance from the FBI, the Department of Homeland Security, Secret Service, and the Postal Service to assist them. I'm just, out of curiosity, I'm wondering, are we a part of the National School Board Association?
We are more of a part of the New York State School Board Association, and that's who we get our intel from, not the National School Board.
Okay, because what you said actually hit home for me. I agree. I think that the best way that we all can understand each other is to be respectful and understanding. And I want to know that you don't agree that people who speak out against, you know, what's going on, or have questions, or want to challenge, or comment, that this is the place to do that. Is that right?
I would imagine so. I can't speak for everyone, but I would imagine none of us have any intentions of calling the FBI on any of you.
Okay, can we go on the record, just because I want it to be a safe place for parents?
Of course. And I would imagine that there's no one out there that is making any kind of threats of any kind against us.
Okay.
Work threat.
Okay.
You're speaking in witness, so no problem.
Awesome. And just out of curiosity on that, there was, the board of ed meetings were taken down from the YouTube channel? Did, is there something?
They were not taken down. There was an IT glitch that was, I believe, restored?
There was a problem, Mrs. Curly, with... There was a problem with Google.
Oh.
And it hasn't restored. They will put it back into the playlist. They're all there.
Because I looked like this afternoon and I'm in the lab, the latest one I saw was, I think, 2018?
I checked. No, please, yes. I checked, no, they, please, yes.
Okay, good.
If you don't find it when you go home, let me know, but I checked from my home, and I checked here, and they're all there.
Oh, perfect. Okay, good. Um, to your, to your other point, Mr. Tussi, um, last month, the board event was presented with a letter from Save Our Schools West Isis Chapter asking you to seek free legal counsel with Hamburg, Mason, Young, and Mortonville regarding New York Code's rules and regulations codified at ten NYCRR two-point-six-zero that was aimed at removing all authority from duly-elected school boards. Um, since our request, the Save Our Schools, uh, West Isis Chapter, has not heard an official response from you, and you said that, that we would hear that, I know that, um, Mr. Antonello actually told me that he would, that this would be discussed tonight, so I didn't hear anything about it.
Sure. The response is that we, as a school board, did, uh, discuss it and take it into consideration, but we decided that we are not going to pursue that.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, so I understand. So, a, a stakeholder asked you to take a free meeting, and, and isn't that your fiduciary responsibility to take the meeting at least and hear out these lawyers and hear what they have to say?
We feel, again, I'll tell you what. I, I really, the discussion was had by the school board, and we chose not to.
So was there a vote by the school board?
It was not an official vote. We just had a conversation and we were all in agreement.
So, and so it was, it was unanimous that everybody agreed that you shouldn't take a free meeting to hear about legal counsel for something that your constituents wanted you to do?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a specific reason that you can give?
The reason was, we don't feel participating in that speaks for the entire community, and where it might speak for some, not, it doesn't speak for all. So that's how we came to that.
Okay. So, 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 I'm sorry. Um, so what I'm hearing for you, from you, is that our elected board of ed continue to use the "our hands are tied" line, and you've decided to give up local control, and you did not canvass the public to have our feedback on our thoughts on you giving up our local control? Is that correct, what you're saying? Because I didn't receive a survey that asked you...
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't think it's fair to say that we're using the term that "our hands are tied," but we are...
But that's what you mean.
We're following the law. And as I said prior, I am not a public health expert, and I do not want local control. And with that, you, our time limit being up, I do thank you, uh, for your...
Well, no. So, okay, fine. So let me just finish then. So, in spite of the fact that, that you're not advocating for your four thousand students, eight hundred staff, and all the stakeholders in West Isis, by deciding you want to give up local control, I want to submit this petition to public record. It's signed by four hundred and ninety-nine of adults over eighteen and one hundred and thirty-seven students. The signatures in this petition were gathered over just a two-week period, and people just keep throwing their names at us at this point, like, please, we want them to take this meeting. So, right here is five hundred for you to see that these are people who want you to take this meeting. And we, we understand, because these stakeholders and these stakeholders here, we're not saying this is a mask, no mask, a vax, no ma, vax debate. This is about our freedom to make choices as a West Isis community. It's...
No, no, no. Uh, people, relax. I want the petition.
Good. Okay. So I just, so I'm going to give it to you. Oh, you're taking it. Awesome. So, thank you. I just, so the, the point is that the people of West Isis want you to take legal action against New York State for stripping our local power.
Uh, Mrs. Crowley, we completely understand where you're coming from, but we, we have hours in our time. And you, thank you very much, again, for everything you have to say, and we'll take a look. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call up, uh, Mr. Barber.
Can I take my mask off while I speak here by myself? Um, first, I want to say my due apologies to you and your family, Mr. Tussi, for your loss this week. Um, we, I know we all, um, feel very deeply for your family, so apologies. Um, good evening. At the last board meeting on September ninth, it was confirmed by the board that West Isis had no plans to teach CRT to our students. This is also stated on the May sixth meeting, and as well by Mr. Antonelli this evening, again, that we will not, we are not teaching CRT and CRT in this community or DEI. This is not happening now, will never happen. With that being said, through a FOIL request by a parent in the district, we discovered that Superintendent Burns hosted two SASSA workshops on April eighth, two, twenty-twenty-one and June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. I know if you're not taking questions, but, Mr. Kevin Burns, are you allowed to share with us who attends SASSA workshops?
That's the Suffolk County Superior Superintendent Association.
So superintendent in Suffolk County?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The keynote speaker for this event was a woman named Elaine Gross, who's the president and CEO of Race Racism. She has led educational and policy advocacy campaigns to promote culturally, culturally responsive, sustaining education, educator diversity, and restorative justice practice. She's an advocate and educator of both CRT and DEI on Long Island. May I hand the board something? The dome you're about to receive was shared by Elaine Gross, the keynote speaker, um, from Race Racism in twenty-twenty. I'm not sure if any of you have seen this dome, but this dome represents the ideology of, of the keynote speaker of this event, a person who has been contracted to educate superintendents in Suffolk County. So I'll take a moment while you guys see this dome, this beautiful dome. Oh, stop the clock, please. It's okay. I think not that much. Has anyone seen this dome before?
It's the first time I've seen it.
Okay. So, again, I know, Mr. Tussi mentioned that you do not have to answer questions, but if you're looking at this dome, where do you all fall in the dome? I know I sent it to my sister and my mom. We see where we fall in the dome as women. We also see where we fall as, with our race being white, where we are with our religion as Christians. Mr. Tussi, I know you have four daughters. Where do they fall in the dome? If this is something that we are sharing, that a woman that is teaching our superintendents is sharing, and this is her ideologies, is very concerning to the community. In a letter written on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, sent to the parents by Assistant Superintendent Dawn Morrison, it states, "There would be a committee that would be formed to discuss CRT and DEI. We do not anticipate forming this committee until spring twenty-twenty-two. Please understand the timeline is fluid and may be adjusted." Mrs. Morrison, are you allowed to answer if there's any update on if this committee has been formed, and if it's been updated in regards to it has been created already, or is it still the fluid timeline of the spring of twenty-twenty-two?
First of all, I have to correct something that you said, um, we never, ever stated that we were going to be forming a committee to explore CRT.
Guys, there is, there was a, I have the letter that was sent.
Would you mind if you could show me that letter?
Yeah. It's printed on very weird...
I hear you are, okay, so I think there's some confusion, which is something that we've been trying to correct for some time now. There is a difference between critical race theory, CRT, and...
They're the same. Zero. They're the same. Zero.
There's a lot of principles that align. DEI and CRT are known in the community as one and the same. When someone, a speaker, Elaine Gross, who promotes both CRT and DEI, is speaking to superintendents, and we are now sharing with the community that CRT and DEI are not being taught to our students, which we know is not at this time, we are educating them on this, it's a bit concerning to us. So I understand it's not happening today, but if this is the ideology of the person we are educating and bringing to workshops in the community, I think it's something that we need to be talking about. So, is, so are you stating there is no committee? We will not be forming a committee of constituents in the community? Ask for the letter. That's what the letter said.
We sent out a follow-out letter to share that we are looking to explore and to gain an understanding of the state's initiative. There is nothing in this letter that talks about critical race theory. We do not teach it. We will never be teaching it. This has nothing to do with critical race.
It does have to do with DEI, though. So, the letter specifically is about DEI. Will we be creating a committee for DEI?
At some point in the future, once we gain a better understanding as a district of what we may need to explore, we do many of the things and ensure that our student and our community is inclusive, that we are meeting the needs of all students. Um, so at this time, we feel that we are in a very good place, but once we gain access to more information, we will be getting work out to the community. I do not anticipate it happening anytime within this region.
But we will be made aware when that committee is formed. And in the letter, it said that it would be, because so many people had shared interest in joining the committee, that we will be aware of how, how it was created, the diversity that was put into it, to make sure that it was equally represented, represented by people in the community.
Yes. And it did also say that the community will be kept apprised throughout the school year, and that the timeframe is going to be...
Yes, I just wanted to check on the timeframe, because it did say...
But there's nothing about critical race theory.
Yes, but DEI and critical race theory are very, very similar, if you went into them.
They are.
So, okay, so, so it's, it's, so we can keep saying DEI or critical race theory. That letter was about DEI. We're asking about DEI at this time, and we're just asking, I was specifically asking about the committee that you mentioned in that letter, and just seeing the timeline had moved up. And if you're saying it has not, and it's still set for potentially spring of twenty-twenty-two, and you'll provide an update, that's all that I was asking.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Um, so, a lot of the questions I was going to ask were just asked, but, um, I do want to ask a few other things. I was wondering if with possibly adopting the DEI, um, would there be funding that you guys would receive, or would you be applying for grants in some way?
We, we have, um, included in part of our PRISIP grant an allocation so that we can explore what we need to do, as Mrs. Morrison points out, as a district, to make sure, as I mentioned earlier, all needs all, that our practices and our protocols are addressing all students, whether they're students with disabilities, whether they're girls that need more opportunities, such as in our STEM programs. So we have allocated some funding in the PRISIP grant for that, other than that, to that extent, it would be something we have to consider in the budget each year.
So, so has any money currently already been spent on, um, I guess, like you said, collecting information on whether or not you feel DEI is appropriate for our community?
For some of the workshops that we have attended, to the extent that there may have been charts associated, yes.
So I'm just curious, you know, there, there's been so much education lost due to COVID. Why we're spending money on new curriculums when our children need to catch up on curriculum that, that, that schooling that they've already missed due to COVID? So, I'm just curious, why is money spent on, on that and not allocated for, you know, whatever, whatever the children needed to catch up due to COVID?
That's a, that's a great question, and it's actually not new curriculum. I see Mrs. Morrison was going to grab the microphone, so I will step on your curriculum first, but... DEI is initiative from the state. It's something for school districts to think about. It is not related to curriculum. West Isis follows the New York State learning standards, and that does not include, uh, critical race theory or any of those things. DEI is not a curriculum.
Okay, I under, I understand that, but then why is money being spent on, you know, investigating whether or not you'd want to use it when we should be spending that money on...
It's not about using anything. It's really about looking and making sure that in our school district throughout the state of New York, that we have supports in place for all students, for special education students, for transgender students, for different students of different religions, spans for all students, but it has nothing to do with a specific curriculum. There is not a DEI curriculum.
And, and no, that's not, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking why we haven't spent that money on our actual curriculum and, and using that to help get our children back to where they need to be.
We have. And so, for example, our, we have a number of teachers and administrators, actually, our entire, uh, entire administrative team was involved today in, um, some literacy training, and we've been doing that to our teachers as well. So this is just another piece of professional development that we provide for our staff to make sure that our skills match what our children need. That's basically exactly what we're doing all the time. And good reflective educators, reflective pre, practitioners, take advantage of professional development at all times. So what we are doing is making sure that our practices are in line with what our students with disabilities need, with our children who may be economically disadvantaged, are we providing them with what they need, access to materials and technology and what have you. That's the whole purpose of this entire initiative, to make sure that every single child, under our supervision, is given everything they need to be successful.
Thank you. Um, and one, one other thing related to that, do you, or can we get a number on how much has actually been spent on exploring DEI?
You can foil that in.
I'm sorry?
By all means, you can foil it.
I can, okay. And then, um, this, this was currently already asked, but, um, looking at that, that dome that we handed out before, um, I myself, when I looked at it, was a little, you know, upset and, and was concerned about where I fell in that dome. And I was just, again, going to ask the same question as to, um, where do you feel you fall in that dome, and how do you feel about that? How do you feel about teaching that to our children? Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very tough idea to bring to our children that, um, it's, it's not even, I feel like it just doesn't even pertain to us. Like, why would that be brought to our children's attention? Like, that they should be looking, now, we're trying to end a type of racism, but now we're going to bring to attention that they are white, they are Christians, they are, you know, cisgender, or cisgender, or transgender, that, that maybe they should feel a certain, like they should feel maybe poorly about it because they, they do have those ideologies.
So, I think I can answer that question regarding the dome. I don't think any of us up here have seen this, and to me, it says something. It says something because it's not part of our plan. It's said over and over, and it's nothing that we intend to teach. However, I think it's important for us to be a part of what...
Yeah, I, I think it's wonderful that we've been able to educate you on that and bring that to your attention, because it's, it's not, it's not something that makes me feel comfortable. I'm sure it doesn't make anybody else here feel comfortable as well.
Correct. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have Frank Avler, no last name.
Mercanti's the last name, uh, no relation to the boxing referee. Uh, so, good evening. I keep this train rolling about the CRT, the DEI, you say tomato, I say tomato, whatever, whatever we want to call it. It is what it is. And I'm not sure if you are aware of the matter that is on brainpower right now, because frankly, as a parent of three children in this school district, it concerns me deeply. And it seems like the beginning of it, and you guys aren't aware of it, just like you aren't aware of the dome, but yet this is on my child's brain.
Can I, I'm sorry, is, are you saying that your child came home with the dome?
No, 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 the, what's on brainpower.
Talking about brainpower.
The black, it's a Black Lives Matter.
It sounded as if you were saying, you know, that, okay.
So it's about the Black Lives Matter protest. Um, why are we integrating our, our children with this video? They're too young, and they're too innocent to be learning about this. I don't know about you, but are you aware that Black Lives Matter, they're a Marxist anarchist organization? Their agenda extends beyond race, into demands for the destruction of our society and our children. The video states that our society is based around structural racism with a built-in system that makes life easier for white people and more difficult for blacks. And it shows a video of a white person running ahead of a black person. I will ask each and every one of you up here, did you get in your careers because of structural racism and bias? I'm waiting. Mrs. Burns, do you drive a white Lexus because of structural racism and a white bias? No, because you worked for it. You are on this board because we, the people, elected you to be on that board. Remember that. It mentions that black people are six times more likely to be in prison than white people, and tells them that black... and tells them that black people are being killed by police twice the rates rate of white people. Why is this on there? Why does my children have access to this? You just said that there's no DEI, no CRT. But yet, we're on that path. I'm almost done. It portrays George Floyd as a hero. Now, we could all agree in this room that what happened to George Floyd was wrong. But why are we portraying him in this light? He was a career criminal who pointed a gun at a pregnant woman's belly. In one of the clips, it shows a sign that says, "White silence is violence." I don't even know what that means. White silence is violence? Do you know what that means? I don't. In the end, it mentions that the Minneapolis City Council voted to remake the police department. Just like you don't want to call it critical race theory, that's their way of defunding the police. Are you teaching your kids at home that to defund the police? Because I don't. In closing, this will only hurt our children. You will not make my children political pawns because you get funding from the state. In my home, we teach our children, all lives matter. If you work hard, you will succeed. And that the police are the good guys. How do I know that the teachers are not showing this video to my children? You just stated, Mr. Taylor, that the state, the board has no plans of teaching CRT. But how do we know if the state mandates it, just like they mandated these little masks? So I'll finish right now. Thank you. I am requesting that my children do not have access to anything on Brain Pop. Nothing. I want to know who's in charge of it and who do I need to speak to. Thank you.
That would be a perfect opportunity for us to go back to research and have our discussion. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. O'Tilly? Okay? Nope, we're good. All right. And Mrs. Ritz? Mrs. Rivera? Mrs. Rivera is here? Oh.
Okay. So I'm not talking about CRT? I'd like to know, I remember last year when we were allowed to bring the kids back. And it was kind of on the hands of the school districts when you guys were going to bring them back. I was wondering if you could tell us how long this is going to go on for? The rates of infection are extremely low. You've done a great job. I was wondering if you could give me an idea of when will you feel that it's possible that we can give a little bit more freedom back to our students?
That was actually one of the topics that was discussed with the state.
I agree.
Clearly, the rates vary across New York State. Long Island is still relatively higher than the rest of the state. But I think we all know that we're seeing the rates starting to come down now. They did not give us the indication as to what would be, although repressed, what would be the number that would allow us to move toward a more open environment. But it is definitely something on the radar. And we're hopeful that if everything continues the way it is, that perhaps it will be seen around later. But we do not have any hard or firm target or anything like that.
Okay. I'd like to challenge those numbers regarding infection rate. As somebody who works in many of the hospitals on Long Island, I would love to challenge that because I believe that as far as I can throw it, but that's for another day. At a Board of Education meeting in July, you told us, and I respected it a lot because you stood there and said that we are not healthcare professionals. That was something that I, but that was great. We have no medical backgrounds. We'd be making any types of decisions, medical decisions. Therefore, we would not. Then you created your opening plan. And we all came here and we saw your opening plan. And there was a couple things I questioned. But you said that you had direction from some medical staff in the building. Excuse me, in the district. I was wondering if you could tell us, who gave you the ideas for what you created as an opening plan? Who was the medical staff in the districts? Do you know? Can you tell us?
I don't recall that.
How did you, when you came up with the, when you came up with the opening plan?
That was based on guidance from the CDC.
Oh, I thought it was somebody from here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, consultation with our own staff. But beyond that, it was as they-
That's what I was trying to say. You said the staff. I was just curious if those staff members weren't there that day because I had a few questions and there was nobody here to back up some of the plan that you had created. But I'm watching the clock. Question for you. I'm not looking for names. I have a husband who's a teacher. I know you're not going to say it, so it's fine. People have their own privacy. It's free. It's my understanding that the district sent out a survey to the staff. We saw it happen as well. Is there a way, any way you can give us a percentage in our school district versus vax versus unvax? Are you allowing a percentage?
We don't have that information.
Okay, so you didn't get the, you didn't get the survey back?
We put out a survey for the purpose of understanding how many people potentially we would have to test.
Okay.
And that was the purpose of the survey. But it was not information that we-
So if 25 of your teachers who are not vaxxed said that they were vaxxed and they were good, they didn't have to submit any proof, right?
No, absolutely. What I'm trying to say is, we may have people testing that are vaccinated and we don't know that.
Okay.
They did not have that information with us. So we don't know as accurately as you're asking the question that how many people are actually vaccinated.
Right. I was just curious because it seems that-
We just want to make sure that everybody tests and then opts out if they don't wish to.
Okay. So they're allowed to opt out if they don't wish to, even if they're not vaccinated?
If they are vaccinated.
If they are vaccinated. So you don't, you don't know those numbers. You just said you don't know the percent, you don't know the numbers.
You don't know how many people are actually vaccinated because some of them are tested.
Okay. Question. You know that I wanted to ask about the vaccine and how I feel against it. And I know you guys have zero to do with it, but I would love for you guys to fight with us just as much as anybody else here. I know at least four of you here on the board have children who are in school. And I was wondering if you can tell me, what are you going to do in January when you're told that you're, I know I just bring this up every time. Are you going to still allow your children to come to school? I'm going to get another card, so it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
I'm going to answer that question. And just, I don't think my other fellow board members need to.
Okay.
I don't know. It's a conversation I have with my wife.
Right.
It's, unfortunately, with all of us working, I don't have the luxury of having them homeschools and staying home. However, if it was mandated, we don't know what options are going to have. So a lot of speculation.
Until it's mandated, you know, just as much as I do, that come next Monday, if we can get an email that says, "Guess what? It's mandated." I want to know that you are going to stand there and stand up for my kid as much as you would stand up for your own daughter. And I'm asking you, and all four of you who have kids in the school said that you guys did not want your kids to be vaccinated three meetings ago. So I want to know, are you going to either stand there and stand up for our kids or get off the board? Because I don't- And you know that I'm not, I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for someone who's not going to speak out of both sides of their mouth. I want you to tell me that you're going to stand there and fight for our kids. Because you know what? We can go and fight all we want. You have, you have a little bit more, I don't even want to use the word power. But we want you to back us up. You all stood there and we believed you. And here we are, wearing freaking masks in an auditorium.
Just to summarize, I think it would be completely hypocritical on my part to say I'm going to advocate for my children, not yours. So if I'm going to advocate for my children, I would think it's safe to say-
What have you done so far to advocate for my kids? All their kids don't want to have this mandate come about?
We're talking about the mask, right?
I'm talking about whatever you want to talk about. Masks, vaccines, anything, anything that you guys committed to. What have you done so far?
There's a lot of different variables. And we could go back and forth all night. I think it's safe to say that if you and I hold on the same page with vaccine mandates, we'll leave it at that.
All right. No, we're not, we're not on the same page. You know what? We both say it, but I'm, I, we, yes. We're not on the same page. Because when our governor comes to me and says you have no choice, I'm not just going to bow down and say, "Okay." You may because you can't. I do have another question, so I'll-
Again?
Want to get another card? I have, I have, I have one more question.
At least we can, we only have one card per person.
All right. And this time, Mrs. Walrath? Mrs. Walrath?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
No.
No? I always have this problem. Good evening. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. First, Mr. Tessie, I would like to say that I'm very, very sorry to hear about the loss of your father. We all feel very badly for you and your family. Okay. I'm going to go in a little bit of a different direction here. I'm here to present a little tale of two states. Some of you may know that I was born and raised in Florida. You know. This state with dangerous freedom instead of peaceful tyranny. I know people like to say that education in Florida is inferior to education in New York. And you may be wondering where I'm going with this. But let's play it all the way through this little comparison. Average property taxes in the state of Florida are $1,773. Average property taxes in West Islip are around $13,000. In Florida, we don't have these tiny little districts like here. Mrs. Burns oversees, I think, seven schools. Is that correct? The school district I came from had 202 schools. That's 202 schools for one superintendent. That superintendent makes less than our superintendent for overseeing almost 29 times the number of schools. I wonder where our taxes are going. But wait, I know, education is better here, right? Our high school is an IB school. Guys, my high school was an IB school and still is. I was in the International Baccalaureate Program more than 20 years ago. And guess what? Every single school I attended in Florida beginning 33 years ago, when I started school, had air conditioning in the buildings. Every single one. New York is more than 30 years behind Florida, but we pay an average seven times more in property taxes. Mrs. Burns has stated that we could potentially look into getting central AC installed in our buildings. So I would like to know, is this on the agenda? Is it? If not, when will it be on the agenda? I said, if not, when will it be on the agenda?
When will it be on the agenda as in, when are we getting it?
Yes. So it's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. So we haven't taken bids? We don't have a projected cost? There's no actual, like, course to move forward on this? It's just an arbitrary, like, in the future, maybe?
Actually, it was a subject of some of our meetings up in the Building and Grounds Department last year. We did have some studies done that were to accommodate this attempt, what was it, $17 million?
Yeah, so we have gone down that route. And I know we're going to be discussing it again. So that was about two years ago. And it was about $17 million to central air the whole building. So, you know, still, in my head, you know, we're going to come back around to that discussion. So, but, you know, nothing, you know, we can discuss that eternally. I know Mr. Aronson was spearheaded that. We had the whole surveys done. We have all the votes, so.
Okay.
But the PRISA funding, some of it, was spent on full environment. And it was to enhance some of the air conditioning in some of the areas.
Yes, I'm actually aware of that. It's-
So it's not worth for that.
Okay. So since you just mentioned it, some of you may be wondering why I'm harping on air conditioning. And that's because this is all more important than ever before. As we all know, the CDC has removed the mask guidelines for schools from their site. They mean for masks to be permanent. Our children need to breathe now more than ever, which brings me to the COVID funding that you accepted on behalf of our district. You signed on the dotted line to receive a total of $5,361,972 from the CARES Act, the PRISA Act, and the ARP Act. But all those millions of shiny dollars come with strings attached. Blood money. By accepting the money, you agree to spend those funds in such a way as to meet certain guidelines set forth by the CDC. Even more troubling is the fact that those guidelines can change in the future. Before our district signed those papers, a few things were supposed to happen. A public meeting for all stakeholders should have taken place. Did that meeting happen? Did the meeting happen?
We spoke about this during our Building and Grounds Committee, and it was discussed at the board meetings.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, at this moment in time, we're going to take a five-minute recess until everyone gathers their composure and keep their language appropriate. Thank you. So this is Walrath. I know we have exceeded our three-minute marker. But what I want to say is, the questions that you have about the money have all been publicly spoken about in Building and Grounds and Finance Committee, which are open meetings. And I'm pretty safe to say that there's no strings attached. There's no quote, as we would say, as some of you said, blood money.
Okay. I was the one that said blood money. Do you happen to know which board meetings those funds were discussed at? Where stakeholders could have come and-
I feel confident saying we have to look that up, Ms. Bloddy.
Okay. Could, like, maybe at the next board meeting, you could show us, like, a live stream or a recording or something of that so we can see that it was discussed? Okay, wonderful. I do have a few more things that I just wanted to wrap up because of the questions and stuff like that. I feel like my time got interrupted. That's okay?
Yeah, I think we are exceeding our time Yeah, I think we've already exceeded our, our time on this, on your three-minute marker. So I'm going to say thank you, and again, we'll have Ms. Bloddy get back to you.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not cool with that.
Sorry?
I'm not cool with that. You, you guys are, are placed in your positions to, to hear.
I don't, I don't think, I know what we're here for. We are here to listen, and I think we've been.
So why aren't you letting me finish my call?
Because we have, you've exceeded your three-minute marker by probably double that, and there are a lot of other people we would like to hear from tonight. I, I do thank you, and I'm going to invite Ms. Christiansen up to the mic. Ms. Christiansen's here? Okay, thank you.
Since Veronica's topic was related to mine, I'm going to continue where she left off. Once our district signed off on receiving those funds, the plans, use of the funds was supposed to be placed online and opened for public comments. Did that happen?
The ARP plan is what needed to be put online, and yes, it did.
The use of the funds, did that happen? How it was going to be used?
I think the question was addressed with the, with Mrs. Walrath. Yes, and, and.
No, you cut it off.
You're asking me about the American Rescue Plan?
Yes.
Yes, that is on the website, correct?
No, but have the funds up from it that you received?
That's, that's on the website.
It's on the website, okay. I misunderstood that. None of us received a Google form or notification that this was taking place. I, I guess that's the issue. It was done, is it, we were, it might be on the website, but how were we supposed to know that it was there? Like, wasn't it supposed to be publicly presented to us?
I imagine you said it was, that was announced at the Finance Committee. I couldn't tell you which date. But yes, that was, that was made.
Yes, you are.
Everything is posted on the district website, dates and location.
One of the guidelines which is supposed to be prioritized is the improvement in indoor air quality in the ARP ESSER funding plan outline, which you can find on our district's site. Let's, we decided, I'm sorry. The district proposed to meet this guideline by purchasing window screens for storing air handlers and filters at the high school. The total proposed for this improvement, two hundred and ninety thousand, seven sixty-two. We spent that amount on air quality in the form of window screens and already existing infrastructure in one school building, whose upkeep should be a part of the normal school budget, at a five million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. Basically, there is only a small portion that was spent of that funding, and only to one building is the point that we're getting at. When is the rest of it going to be used for what purpose that it was? Yeah, basically, the, the point is, it's, it's just.
Okay, so we're going to look that information up for you, and again, we will get back, back to you.
Since I have a little bit of time left, I'll, whatever wasn't just said, I'll go with. So what you're saying is there's no strings attached, so to speak, with this funding, because I found that there is guidelines that have to be followed. By accepting the funds, the schools now under CDC Crisis Response Cooperative Agreement, which means the district must comply with existing and unknown future directives and guidance from the HS, HS, HS Secretary. So basically, we're accepting money on conditions we don't know what the directions could be. Is that true? Is that factual?
So, Mrs. Christiansen, this is a grant in aid, and Mrs. Bloddy, correct me if I'm wrong. Correct? We applied for it in a similar manner in which we would, our title money or our IDEA monies, monies that fund our, you know, special ed departments, those bucket lines, we already submitted the grants, and those items have been posted on the district website, both the ARP and the CRISA funds, and the grants have already been approved by the state. So what you see is what you get.
Well, my understanding, and I don't have the actual documentation in front of me, I can send it if you'd like, but is that you're basically receiving that money in exchange for basically doing whatever the CDC says, which is what we're living in right now, so.
So the way it happens, unfortunately, we have to go out and go through our normal processes of getting these projects approved through the, through the normal channels. Okay, so funding involves an architect sometimes, not. And then, once we engage in these projects and we finish these projects, we submit that to the state and we get the money back.
Okay, so, but using our children as pawns is not part of why you got the money? Because what they're asking you to do is mask our kids sensibly is, is one of the guidelines to receive that funding. You, you receive the funding, you're basically signing our kids to the devil, and this is what we're putting the money on. That's my understanding.
Which document are you referencing when you say that?
I don't have that. I just did a summary.
So can we do that and then get back to you tomorrow?
Okay.
And explain?
I have a few more questions. Do you want to get back to me? Or should I go to the now?
You can email the questions.
Here, you can. I'm just going to read them. I'm not expecting a response, but just so that.
I don't know where this came from, so it would be helpful if the reference to this, if, when we chat or when you can mail me the information, if you could just let me know what the reference was to this.
Okay. I'm just going to read these questions off just so that we're all on the same page. I'm not expecting answers, if that's okay?
You want to read them off? Is it going to give you a choice?
Thank you. Yeah, you can, yeah, you can take it. I'm not expecting an answer right now. I'm going to, I'll read them off so that everyone here. When does the agreement expire, the American Rescue Plan Act? That, whatever the signs for, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. What are all the current and future requirements of the district under the ARP grant? Again, basically, what the money was received and what things need to be given, and, you know, in relation to accepting it. How the funds have been spent, are slated to be spent, it's kind of tentative, I'm sorry, I'm just sort of interested in. Have benchmark metrics to, to when the mask, the mandates been provided? So basically, is there any endpoint? How are constitutional rights, privacy, and protections of due process secured under the CDC agreement? Have any board members been threatened with legal action by the New York State Education Department to comply with the Department of Health mandates?
All right, so like we said, we will get you the answers to those questions. Thank you again. Next one I have is simply Jay.
Good evening.
Just for the records, the public records, could I have your last name?
Montrowy. Today Pfizer announced, they submitted for emergency use authorization to the FDA vaccines for five-year-olds or above. Can you tell me, will there be any vaccine sites, mobile units on any school grounds?
We, we, right now, no.
Right now, no? Can you guarantee that will ever happen?
We have an agreement with some accounting to serve as a point of dispensing if there were to be something that has been, you know, discussed previously at previous meetings. They have not used our facilities. However, we have had both staff and community members ask us if they can obtain vaccines on school grounds. So. So to say never, we couldn't say that in all honesty. However, I think what we can tell you is that at no time would we ever issue vaccines to your children on school grounds unless that was something that you expressly wanted in writing.
You guys just said you're not health officials, and you're going to administer vaccines if parents want it?
So I think we need to bear in mind that our school nurses administer medication to your children. They take their temperatures.
They give shots in school, right now?
They do not. I have to qualify that, because for some of our children that may need insulin or, or other type of medication, they may work with the parents in that regard.
So if the ARP changes their guidelines, the COVID relief, and it's required, will your, will schools administer the vaccines then?
Right now, you're creating a scenario that we don't know could happen. Are you asking if school personnel will be the ones administering the shot? That's what you're asking? Or if it will just?
On school grounds, if, if, if the COVID relief requires it.
Is there a possibility? You cannot say absolutely not, so in that regard, yes, there is a possibility.
So there's a possibility, yeah.
Anything is possible in every regard. But keep in, keep in mind that if that were to happen, that would only be with written parental consent. So we're not taking students and getting them vaccinated on their own, right? And that would come from the parents. So if you as a parent said no, it wouldn't happen here on school grounds. If you as a parent said I want it, and you would come, and that's how it would work.
We said no to the masks, and it's not my choice, it's my child to wear this thing.
Right, but those are, you're not going to turn it.
Also. So if the DOH says you can do it?
All right, so listen, again, I, I don't know why we're debating, because there's no right, there's no wrong answer. It's personal feelings, and again, we are listening to what you were saying. We are hearing you, and we are taking notes and documenting everything you're saying, and we are taking all of your concerns very seriously.
Can you tell me if any benchmarks or metrics have been met to end these mandates? Have you been informed of that, asked that question at all?
And I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. Can you repeat that, please?
Any benchmarks, metrics at some point to end these mandates on the masks?
As discussed earlier, it was pressed, but there were no answers given.
Did you ask any?
Was.
And they didn't give you an answer?
As I mentioned earlier, at my conference last week, that was something the superintendent was pressing on. There is no answer right now.
Pressed them, right? Pressed them for answers, Mrs. Burns?
Can you repeat that?
Same que, the metrics, when you met last week?
Yes.
Did you ask them and press on the issue? Can you give us an answer?
That was one of the questions that was answered, and there was no, there was no answer right now. There was no specific information as to what type of metrics would allow us to get rid of the masks. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, there's no answer right now.
If a child forges a document, if these vaccines became mandated, are you checking their signature versus a parent's signature? Do you have signature verification?
So, so you're asking what happens if a child hypothetically forges a card?
For consent, do you have signature verification of the parents?
Yeah. I don't think we're asking that question, because we're not even offering the vaccine. So again, if, if that happens, I guess we'll have to cross that bridge when it comes, but right now, we're not there.
Thank you.
Okay, Katie Floria?
I have some questions to ask, but if, I know you said you're not really interested in answering so many of them, so I might email them to you as well. But before I say that, I want to share some stories that go hand in hand with the questions that I'm going to ask, so you can fully grasp why parents are concerned and would like to have them answered. Last year, my husband and I were on the phone with our daughter's principal and nurse several times. These conversations were after my daughter and many other children were yelled at by their lunch aid constantly throughout the year to social distance on the playground and wear masks correctly. My daughter was also told by several subs in the building that had taught her class that she was not allowed to take a mask break, or that she needed to stop drinking her water and put her mask back on. That is appalling. My daughter did not like school last year. She came home crying some days, not wanting to tell us what happened because she was scared. She was apprehensive about going back to school each time we talked to the principal. She was afraid of getting yelled at again or getting in trouble. Not only did she suffer emotionally, but her academics took a toll. She received reading services, and to say the services she received during virtual learning, they were a joke. If she met with her reading teacher three times in the whole four months, that was a lot. I will say, though, this past year, her reading teacher was amazing. She left first grade, though, back at where she was in kindergarten. Besides my child issue, I know another family whose child has been emotionally affected by mask wearing.